Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
For December 4th, time is 6:30. First up is review changes to the agenda, if there are any. I don't have any changes to the agenda. Bruce isn't here yet, so if we move quickly, he won't be able to make any changes. Oh, okay, moving on from that.
Here he goes.
Scheduled members of the public. Sarah Wiswol is here for budget discussion. Unscheduled members of the public. Dot Manager is here, and I'm sorry, I don't hear anything.
Keith Kopeloff, can I call you by email?
Sorry, spell your name for me.
Oh, okay. K O, K D I T H, first name. K O P E L O F M.
Simple, simple. Okay, thanks, welcome. Next up is approving the minutes from the November 20th. I had a few things on page one which were just little Sarah Wiswol's.
They spell her name.
Name will spell it. It's just, there's no D, there's two Ls, no D.
Edit it and then I'll type it up, fix it.
I can, you sent me your Word doc, so I'll just make the changes to your Word doc you sent me, but thank you. And a couple of just little grammatical things down in the last paragraph, spelling of year. The only real substantive thing I had at the bottom, the last paragraph on page one. The second, third to last sentence, at this time, there is not access to the land or trails from the Brookline, I think there's just a little, I think we'll make that, from Brookline and about 2.5 miles is riverfrontage. Does anybody have any other changes on page one? All right, moving on to page two.
Fourth paragraph.
Fourth paragraph.
David Jones, review the changes. Then you go three lines down, it says, "And, and fininancial reports."
Oh, yeah, I didn't even see that.
I had you as Bruce Mello, the W.
Did you?
No, I changed it.
I didn't see that.
I fixed it.
She fixed it. The other thing I'm gonna do, just the Wyndham, you make mention a few places of the Wyndham County solid, it isn't actually Wyndham County Solid Waste Management District, it's just Wyndham Solid Waste Management District, so I'll fix that. The only substantive thing I had on that page was the next paragraph down that starts C, David Jones will be submitting, blah, blah, blah. About halfway down, it says, "If that were to happen, we will be renting bids adding about $1,000 or so. It'll actually be at least $2,000." Well, I mean, we don't really know how much it would potentially cost us, but it would be a minimum of $2,000. So I'll just change that to at least $2,000. Hopefully, I avoided it. Anything else on page two? Anything on page three? I did not have any changes on three or four. Does anybody see anything on either of those pages? All right, I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the November 20th meeting as amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joseph. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the November 20th meeting as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? All right. Those are approved. All right, moving on to new business in the SLP building window bids. We have three, we've received three bids. We will open them all. The first bid is from Norm Holden. Of course, going through the details of this is gonna be a little complicated.
Did he unlist it when I told him to listen?
No, it is listed, so it's an estimate for repair, repairing and repainting, I believe. A lot of details about exactly what would be done as part of that.
I asked him to do that.
So that's for the repairing. Labor and materials, $5,500 for that. Then there's also a separate total bid for the entire building, painting, I'm assuming. Painting the entire building, siding and trim, et cetera, at $37,000, which was not actually part of what we were, was in our RFP. I'll pass this around. I might work with it. The second bid we've received is from Mommy. It says that it is for the painting of eight exterior windows. Detail about the scope of work, which I won't get into at the moment. Bottom line, labor and materials, $8,000. One thing I should note, just for people who are here for it, is though we're opening the bids for this tonight, we will be very quickly tabling further discussion of these till the next meeting. In part because we wanna make sure all the board numbers here, but also there's a lot of other discussion we need to have on this project in general. The last bid.
Did you say eight?
Yeah.
Ten. He mis, he miswrote, he miswrote it. I gotta get that straightened out. It's ten, it's not eight. Even, even Norm said ten.
Yeah, it does say for eight windows.
Why did you put the wrong bid?
So the last bid is from Apex. To remove and discard 10 windows from the building and install 10 new Anderson Silverline replacement windows at a total cost of $10,550.
$10,550.
$10,550, and that's for replacements.
Bruce, were the other two, were the, were, in the, in the, was it asked for painting and also replacing, two bids?
In the, in the RFP.
In the initial RFP?
We gave people the.
The choice.
The choice to give us a bid for replacing them or for repairing them. It would appear to me that we have essentially two bids to repair them and one bid to replace them.
Right.
Right.
Did you have to contact the Apex?
I told you. Professional.
Well, she just read that.
So professional. There you go.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Hard out, double pane, saving, saving utilities over years.
So obviously, I mean, for the benefit of the people who are here, part of the reason that we're going to table this for a more involved discussion is that we're not necessarily, we haven't made a decision yet as a board whether we think it makes more sense to move forward with repairing the windows, replacing the windows, or quite frankly, possibly not doing either, because we also have, we need to have discussions about the money that we have available in the school fund and.
What's the name of the first bidder?
Norm Holden.
Holden.
H L.
All right, before I move to table this, I guess I would just ask the folks from Apex, since you're here. Is there anything in addition to what's laid out in your bid that you wanted us to know?
Yes.
Or that you want to share with us?
So that you double pane, we hard out, we acid reprove. They also have all the crosses between the two panes.
Oh.
The look of the.
So that they'll look.
Right, and then everything else will be replaced, all the molding and everything to match what's there now. So it wouldn't be a big change in look, but it'd be a big change in efficiency.
But the size of the windows will be different. You're gonna keep the header size.
Right, exactly, it'll be exactly, yeah. These windows will fit in exactly, and also, you can buy half screens or full screens for them, depending on if you're opening them. Because sometimes you just want the half screen where, so, those are options. But other than that, just the efficiency and the look should be the same, and or replacement of any rotten wood or anything that needs to be done, and then the same type of moldings that look, that's there now to make it give the same look.
Joseph, do you have a question?
What is the estimated efficiency?
Of the overall?
Yeah, comparatively to single pane windows.
Well, it's hard to even, because it's probably a tremendous amount of leaks, and that will be insulated all around them, so the R factor's gonna be huge, because you're gonna fix all the leaks, and that glass, I don't know how thick it is or what, but single pane glass does not do anything to keep cold from coming in except for the air, because it has no gas or anything to trap, so it has really very little R factor. So, you know, 10 windows, it's hard to say what it'll save you here, but over the years, it'll probably help a lot. And also comfortable, so.
Can I ask a question? Is there a grade in the type of window that you use, you know, like a dimension, a, are there different grades, different?
No, today, like Anderson and most, they have the same standard, they all go to whatever, because the gas has the same properties and the glass is gonna be same thickness. It's just the quality of how they made, and Anderson welds all their seams together, so they're, you know, durable windows, and they have a great warranty compared to others, but.
Warranty half.
Thank you.
I didn't get back on the exact warranty, but they have warranty if they fail and we get the.
Smoke and.
Smoke and, right, things like that, you know.
And vinyl?
Yeah, they're all vinyl, inside and out, yeah.
Yep.
Excuse me, I didn't catch your name.
My name is Carla.
Are you a Kopeloff as well?
I am.
Thank you. That's convenient, isn't it?
Carla with a C?
Yes, it is.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, then I'd like to make a motion that we table further discussion of the SLP building window bids until the December 18th meeting, so second. Second by Bruce, any discussion about that? All those in favor of tabling discussion of the SLP building window bids until this.
Just one more thing.
Sure.
Chris, who will be doing the job with somebody else, is willing to do it after hours at night, weekends, Saturday and Sunday, so if that helps with the scheduling as far as making the job done, he's flexible that way, so nights and weekends are fine, so we can deal with that. Great process, you know, we need to just complete one window, two windows, before we go to the next, so we can deal with school.
And Chris will be doing it?
Yes.
Okay, so sorry, so all those in favor of tabling the discussion of the SLP building window bids to the December 18th meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? All right. So we will continue discussion at the next meeting. Thank you very much for coming, and thanks, thanks for getting on the project.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Nice to meet everybody.
Nice to meet you. So Dot, I'm sorry, I realize that you're here as an unscheduled member of the public, and I think you probably had a specific thing that you wanted to talk about, do you wanna go ahead and?
Yeah, I'm gonna take just a couple of minutes. I'm here as a town resident, I'm here to petition or ask the select board as you go through the budget this evening to consider keeping the $2,000 line item in the budget for the cemetery for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. The cemeteries that the select board is responsible is not, I'm not talking about the Riverside Cemetery, I'm talking about the, this, the town of Brookline has six, what we call ancient or back cemeteries. Five of them, one of them Cynthia now has in her yard, and she maintains his responsibility and has taken over the responsibility of keeping it clean and mowed. The five other ones for the past many years has just been weed whacked. In 2017, the state, the Vermont Secretary of State had updated the cemetery laws on how they should be maintained, and in reviewing that, when I was on the select board, we realized that we were remiss in not keeping up some of the cemeteries to the best of our ability. The Cemetery Commission is responsible for the Riverside Cemetery. I am an elected member to the Cemetery Commission, I'm not speaking as a commissioner, however. When I was on the select board, selectmen are responsible for the back cemeteries. We, over the past two years, did have a $2,000 line item budget. Those two years in which we raised, we appropriated $4,000 total, we were actually able to spend about $12,000 on the cemetery revisions, through donations of services and from citizens and from the Why Not work. Penny Massey has donated over $5,000 of personal money to help bring up the cemetery. The Austin Cemetery panel, Why Not and his family, did a lot of work and only billed us for approximately half of what work that they did. I would like to ask the select board again, as they do the work, as you do your budgetary review, that you do keep that line item this year, because we do have some more work to do, including replacing the gate that was broken down by, when the Austin Cemetery was this summer. There is some work that needs to be done, including liming and reseeding some of the areas, which are heavily covered with pine needles, and then seed and continue to mulch it. We do have responsibilities to do some repairing of some of the cemetery stones. The select board is responsible for the cemeteries that are not part of the Riverside Cemetery. If we do not end up spending $2,000, of course, it would go back to the townspeople at the end of the fiscal year. This report is an important thing, and I'd be willing to email to each and every one of you later on this evening a copy of the responsibilities that you have as select boards to maintain the cemeteries. As I said, in the past, we would spend about $35 twice a year on each of the cemeteries that we have to weed whack them. It really needed to have a lot more work done. Like our buildings, there was some maintenance that was deferred on the grounds, and so we have in the past few years been catching up with it. And I'd like to see it actually be brought up to where it should be. There is some historical stones that have been broken down, and I am a member of the Vermont Old Cemetery Committee, Cemetery Association, and I have the ability to reach out to some of the people in town, Charlie Marchand and some other people, that can come back to Brookline and to give us some advice and to try and get some of the cemetery stones put up, not only here in the Austin Cemetery, but some of the Northland Ezekiel cemeteries. And I'd like to have your support, and maybe some people, you know, I'd like to, I'm not on the select board, so I would be glad to assist the select board members who might have an interest in doing that. And so I'm here tonight to ask you, as you go through the budget, if you could consider keeping that $2,000 line item active, or at least close to the $2,000 line item as you go through the budget this year. And that's why I'm here tonight. So I will email this to you. It has a bit of humor when you're reading about cemeteries and it, and your responsibilities, but, yeah. It's an important thing when you, people buy a deed, even though the deed may have been bought and purchased a hundred years ago, it is a perpetual deed, and our responsibility is to keep that up. Thank you very much.
Bruce, do you have a? Dot, am I, am I correct that I recall at some point you had done some research, and is there, maybe I'm not remembering this correctly, but are we actually, as a town, obligated to spend a certain amount of, or at least budget to spend a certain amount of money per ancient cemetery?
Yes.
I thought it was $500.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so actually asking for $2,000 is below what we should be spending. I think it's an adequate amount to ask to spend at this point in time, but as I said. What, some of the cemeteries, like the one by Ezekiel's, is small, I think there's 12 graves there.
Yeah.
Versus one that has 70 graves. The Austin Cemetery is almost ready to be considered by the Cemetery Commission. I might like to bring it up in the next year or so, to be made active again, because it's been cleared out. We would not have to purchase any additional land to widen the cemetery. Mrs. Massey has, her generosity has enabled us to clear out, and the line has enabled us to clear out a whole half an acre, and it's.
Oh, you mean to sell plots in there, is that what you're saying?
Sell plots for, it would be ready for cremains, not for bringing heavy equipment, but for hand burials of urns, and so that would be a benefit for the town. But we do have to do something, there's a fence that needs to be repaired, because that was damaged at one point, and so. But again, I'd like to ask you to consider that when you're doing your budgetary expenses this year.
Joseph, do you have a question?
Since this $2,000 is sort of for catch-up, like you were saying, we've fallen behind on some of these repairs, do you expect at some point in the future that we won't need a full $2,000 to maintain the cemeteries?
I would think so, but then again, we have to review over what is the minimum that we must spend by law. There are some statutes, in fact, on one of the pages in here, it says that a select board member who willfully neglects his or her duties concerning town cemeteries is subject to a penalty of up to $200 personally. So, so.
A stakehold?
That's a law, the statute, 18, paragraph 5363. So, I'm just saying.
Somewhere in that book is the language for how much the select board has to spend.
Right, and, and that's why I'm gonna say, some, some of this is for cemetery commissioners, which is for the Riverside Cemetery, and so there's a fine line between talking about back cemeteries and active cemeteries, and making a back cemetery active, or an active cemetery non-active, and municipal cemeteries, and religious cemeteries, and so it's, we all need to understand what the responsibility is. So I will email you all this, ask you to look it over, and I'd like to, you know, I would like to join with you when the weather's better, next year, and going out and seeing, you know, what the history is of the town. It's a pretty neat thing to do, and that's, thank you very much.
My dog really likes to go up to the Ezekiel.
It's beautiful.
She doesn't come back with anything too.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
It's pretty.
But that has at least two or three stones that are down underneath, underneath that have to be brought dug out. Again, the stones are broken off, so, thank you very much.
Awesome, thanks, Dot.
Okay.
Thank you, Dot.
Okay, then moving back to new business to 6B. I'm gonna have to wait for Gwen to come back from reforming the yard. So rescheduling to January 1st meeting. So our next, our first meeting in January, of course, would fall on New Year's Day. So I think we should reschedule that, because I personally won't be here. And I don't know what anyone else will be doing, but. So, I guess my suggestion would be to maybe consider scheduling it for the second? The Thursday? Do we know if that conflicts with anything else?
Normally, the. No, I don't. No, that's good, the second, the second Thursday would be difficult, because that's when the planning commission meets, the second Thursday.
Would it be possible to just do the eighth, keep it on Wednesday?
Go 8 and 22?
Oh, yes. Well, then we would be, yeah, I mean, well, unless we're then gonna, then we would basically have meetings back-to-back weeks.
Oh, you wanna go 8 and 22?
Because we would be together.
Yeah, we could do 8 and 22, like Bruce was saying.
But then we have.
And I mean, it would sort of work with January, since there's all those Wednesdays.
Yeah, then the problem becomes that then we fall out of first and third, and there are a lot of other things.
The only thing violating. I wanna warn you is that we have some bills that have to be paid, so.
Personally, I would prefer we only move to one meeting and not set up a scenario where we have to move two meetings. I just think it'll overcomplicate it. So Gwen, we're talking about the rescheduling to January 1st meeting, and I just threw out the possibility of maybe doing it January 2nd, of just shifting it, does that work for people? Does that, does that work for you just?
I mean, it would work much better for me to do the eighth, but, I mean, I'm not gonna, willfully not come to a meeting, so. If it works, if the eighth doesn't work for other people, then I can do the second, plus.
I personally, I, I mean, the other, the other thing that I see is maybe being a little, I mean, I guess it's not that bad. Then we would be going three weeks, essentially, between meetings, if we put all the way to eight.
We've got other issues with the budget and the town book and all that stuff coming up.
Yeah, right, I mean, at that point, we do have.
So that would, if you do put it the eighth, then you're gonna have a meeting on the eighth and the 15th?
That, that, yeah, that would be the scenario, I guess. Obviously, I guess we don't know with show me, whether that's, how far in advance? Well, we, I guess we don't have to completely decide this today. We could decide it at the December 18th meeting, I guess, which I would prefer to just, you know, for sure whether that.
The Wednesdays are.
Sorry?
The Wednesdays are open?
The eighth, is that?
Yep.
One, seven, one, two, it'd be three weeks.
Yeah, it'd be three weeks, which, I mean, honestly, I mean, there are other months where it's three weeks as well, so it's not like that's that completely unprecedented.
And then we're going 8, 22, and then.
And I mean, if there are things that need to be signed in between, obviously, I can come and sign this thing, so it's not like it really stops anything else from working. Does the eighth, is the eighth available for you, Pierre?
Yeah, well, yes, I think it is.
No, I don't have anything but a Doc's, what, for the morning. Does the eighth work for everybody else?
Good with either way, whatever you want.
I'm pretty sure that's okay for me. Guy, do you see any problems with that, or?
No, I don't have, nope, nope.
As far as I know, we don't have any elections or anything.
I should be sober by then.
If I, you'll be dead.
Okay, then, in that case, I'd like to make a motion that we change the date of the first meeting in January to be January 8th.
Are we gonna do 8 and 15?
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, well, although I guess, yeah.
We're a troubled lab. Then we do that one, and then we're back to a.
Well, right, and then.
Then we're back to a three-week span again.
But we would, yeah, which is the way just the month's fall, we'd be there anyways.
Hey, why don't we just move both, just do 8 and 22? He posts it, he puts it in the town.
Well, yes.
Just changing two meetings, but it's the heart of January.
Does the 22nd, would the eighth and the 22nd be available for you, Pierre?
Back to back.
Yes.
I think that that makes the most sense.
What, 8 and 22?
8 and 22.
Because 8 and 15, what's the point?
And not the 15th.
There's not enough gap.
And not the 15th, so we basically shift January's meetings to the eighth and the 22nd.
Why should we not do it when it comes to?
Are you gonna do it a different time? What's that? Yep. We'll try not to change anything. We'll try not to change anything else about them. Okay, so then scrap the motion I was about to make then. I make a motion that we shift the select board meetings for January to be January eighth and January twenty-second, still at six thirty P M. Is there a second?
A second?
Second, Bruce.
Although we haven't asked Shelby.
Well, we're just gonna go with the assumption that that's gonna be okay. All right, any other discussion about it?
You've got a quorum present?
Yeah.
Well, we're just trying to make everybody happy.
You can't make everybody happy. There's a process table all about that.
We're always trying. Okay, all those in favor of changing the select board meetings in January to be January eighth and January twenty-second signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Bruce seconded it originally.
Yeah. Any opposed, sorry, any extensions? Okay, all right, so January eighth and twenty-two. And then after Guy, we can talk about what.
How do you oppose it?
Something we need to do and post that.
Yeah, I think we can have Julie send out a blast.
Yeah, and that's programmed. Do we have to do anything beyond that yet?
No, we just have to post it on the three places that we do it. And I'm pretty sure that's all we have to do. We don't have to go in a newspaper or anything, that's for sure.
Okay. Okay, moving on to old business and first up is budget discussion. And we are right on track. Now we have been joined by Samara.
Yeah, I can't stay here all night, but I can give you a group forty minutes of background, which you probably don't want me to talk for forty minutes.
Well, yeah, I guess.
I can give you fifteen minutes of background and how prior treasurer budgets were come up and how certain select board decisions were made with salaries changes. And also a little bit of statutory rules about what happens if you're over the budget at the end of the year and what happens if you're below your budget and you pay a deficit and what happens if you're under budget and what you do with the surplus. I thought that might be helpful.
Yes.
I talked to Guy and Sarah, I know Cho's news, so you don't have that history.
So why don't we then, Samara, if you don't mind, why don't we start with, let's call it no more than ten minutes of back.
Perfect, because you have a lot of work to do.
We do.
And so basically, the treasurer's budget, don't be confused by the fact that the treasurer's budget was smaller than the assistant treasurer because I created the position the way it worked for me, which was that I didn't want to work more than five or six hours a week and I had very competent, well-trained assistant treasurer who put in the extra nine or eight to nine hours we budgeted for her. And then there's face time that happens with Guy. Guy's assistant treasurer, because he does the face time, so I didn't have to be in here on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And he gets plenty of text questions that he feels that we don't have to necessarily field. Plus, we rearranged the treasurer's budget a little bit a couple of years ago and cut money from the auditor's budget and moved it over into the treasurer's budget so that we could have Marie Tattersall come and do the bank recs because an outside auditor recommended that, and this is common accounting practice, you do not have the person handling the cash do the bank recs. It's a bad control. If mistakes happen, sometimes they're not disclosed. Some of us who know the history of the town know what happened when there wasn't adequate control. And for Joe or Bruce or you guys who don't have the history, I'm happy to share it. I won't share it on camera. But it basically was a pretty, you know, it's kind of got a little, it was a little higher in years past as we were less experienced and it came down over the years. And now I think you have a situation where I walked Sarah through how I calculated the budget based on hours and rates and who was doing the work. So hopefully you have time to pull that together for yourself. And her budget may look completely different because she's doing more of the work and at a different rate than I did the work. And I mean, Guy's hours should be pretty stable. Marie Tattersall is very stable, which she's doing at fourteen bucks an hour, which is nothing in bookkeeping speak. And I'm volunteering a little time. And so I would expect that your budget would shift from assistant treasurer to treasurer, that's one thing. Secondly, when the, all the salaries and rates were determined, gosh, this is going back before everyone's time except, no, actually, my husband was on the select board and refused himself. And Stan Noga was on, Tom Stats, David Parker, I can't remember, but. And Amy, what was Amy's last name?
Amy Nezby, Nezby?
Yeah, Amy, yeah, Amy Nigel.
Nigel, right, Nigel.
They, they did a really thorough, salaries had not changed for like, I don't know since when, like, they had been pretty level for very, pretty low rates for a long time. And no one had ever done a comparative study with other towns. So the Vermont League of Cities and Towns does a municipal comp survey every year. And if you, we have copies in the office for anyone's review. But basically Stan and Amy did a really thorough research and did this look compared by size of town, by number of positions and things like that. And that's how they came up with what hourly rates should be and what the select board stipends should be. And if you look at your own stipend as a basic select board member, it's fifty bucks a meeting, which doesn't count, it doesn't count for the times when something goes seriously upside down, like Irene, which happened. And you, you're essentially turned into a full-time volunteer because it's the select board's responsibility to deal with things like that. And, you know, all the road maintenance and whatever, essentially. So just town, keeping the town running. So what happens if you under-budget? If you cut everything and you end up with a deficit at the end of the year? By state law, you have to, you cannot hold a deficit. So you have to go up to the taxpayers and you either vote to what they call refund the deficit, which we had to do a couple of years when there were heavy legal threats in this town, which is a different story, but. And you have to retire the deficit. And if the town payers won't voluntarily refund it, you are mandated to tack on a prescribed amount. I don't remember it off the top of my head. You can probably look up the statute or call B L C T and they can walk you through it. Or I probably have something saved in some old file that talks about it.
But it's a hundred percent, Samara? In other words, if the town refuses to do it, it's a select board's responsibility?
The select board's responsibility is, it's not optional. You have to raise the tax by a certain amount and it may actually exceed the deficit. So you may end up increasing your tax more than you had to.
Really?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact figure, but it's all there in the statute. And our attorney Fisher, I was, I worked within the first year of happening. Anyway, so, I mean, but this is what happens. A budget is a guideline, sometimes you're over, sometimes you're under. If you're under budget, you end the year with a surplus, then you have to go to the town and you have a choice. In many years, when, like the first few years I was working, you can use that surplus to offset the next year's budget. So in essence, you refund that money to all the taxpayers by taking, you know, by calculating what needs to be raised by taxes, by subtracting off the surplus.
And the following year.
Right, you do it at town meeting. You say, oh, look, we have surplus. I haven't looked at this year's bottom line, what's in the P and L. And this is only in the operating fund, in the general town operating fund. The highway fund carries over its surplus. It's, it can, because the understanding is that you may need to build up money over time to do the necessary road maintenance, right?
And to receive grants.
And to, and to have funds on hand so you have the capacity to say, well, we have the ten percent to cover our town contribution or twenty percent. It's usually not more than twenty percent on the grants we've been getting in the past. But that's sort of it in a nutshell. And I think there's been a lot of thoughtful history in trying to build something that made sense so that we could get reasonably qualified people who are willing to step up and do the work. One, keep things at a level and try to level fund. I think also historically, if you go back through the town reports, you'll find that most of the municipal tax rate has been pretty level except in years where we had to pay off a deficit. And Gwen's been here for a couple of these. Guy's been through it as long as I've been through it, but not on the select board. And. And, and basically, two, if you look in your town report, you'll see that the municipal taxes are like a drop in the bucket compared to the state levy, you know, education tax. And the way, the way that's been calculated by the state, the state calculations are impacted by our appraisal, by the school budgets and how much is spent per student compared to what they, what the state sets as the acceptable per student. So if we're over it, you know, it can push our tax up. So that's had a, that's had an impact. I remember the first year it happened, I looked at it and I went, what the heck? You know, and then I started seeing, understanding and I actually talked to our, one of our town members who's a state economist. And he, he basically said, there are maybe three people in the state who actually understand how this works. Two of them are contractors. So after looking at it for a while, I think I can give you a general explanation of all the things that impact the education rate, but we here don't control it. We can go to school meetings and now the big district meeting and try and control it that way. But the municipal tax, I think you have to be very cautious. If I were looking to reduce anything, the first thing I always do when I look at a budget is I look what wasn't spent in the prior year. Have we been over budgeting? And if we have been, then why? Were there just, was it just a lucky year where we didn't need anything? You know, or, you know, did we vote too much into the budget? In particular, I think also in the treasurer and clerk's positions, we, we have, now recent, well, not just recently, for the last few years, we've taken on some roles that aren't strictly speaking in our domain. So we've had to support other areas of town government that needed support. So that's the scoop as I see it. I, I hope that helps explain. If you want a really detailed discussion of salary calculation, ask Stan Noga. He'll get you detailed analysis.
Oh, God.
He did a ton of research on that and he is.
I remember that.
He is, he is thorough to a fault.
He is thorough.
That's true. Yeah.
Okay, so before we, so where we left off last time was at the end of page two. But I guess, Sarah, I wasn't sure whether you had a chance to go back and think about the assistant treasurer, treasurer breakdowns and how you might want to consider those changing.
I did it, and Samara helped me with that and then I lost my paper and it might be in the warrant. If you have.
Can I look through the ones?
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have any in Excel on the computer?
That's another story.
Okay, well, we won't talk about it.
I just had it like on my desk and I just looked in my basket and it wasn't there.
All right, well, I'm gonna suggest we come back to this.
I agree.
Just in the interest of trying to keep moving through all of this. Okay, so starting on page really of the.
Did we have a question on Joseph, did we have a question on the select board?
Oh, no. Everything was answered.
Do you have it, this select board? No, I don't have it. She found it. She found it.
Okay, you found it, so maybe we will.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to, you know, I really like this town, so I'm really happy to pitch in every now and then, just not on a full-time paid basis. All right, take care. And I appreciate all the work. I mean, it's, I think until you sit on the select board, you like go, oh crap, is it fucking, you know, something like that? All right.
Thanks, Samara.
Well, thank you.
I'm sure we actually need your help too.
Yeah, thanks, Samara.
And we'll be helping Sarah with financial reports soon, so.
We appreciate it.
So make sure she gives a timetable of when you need to stop or do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we kind of know when we audit it, hopefully, but.
Right, and then the good thing is. Anybody need a pen or a pencil or anything?
I'm good.
I have a pencil here.
Chocolate?
I'd like that.
Do you have a pencil with you?
Yeah. I had one, but it's in this part of town, January.
That's okay. So this is her. This is her, yeah, well, this is her, yeah. To be honest, I haven't really even looked at it to try to understand. But I think she, it looks to me like, yeah, so she's sort of broken down the timing of people and their rates and then extrapolated it out and then sort of re-broken it down into buckets of treasurer versus assistant treasurer. Bucket of assistant treasurer. So it looks like previously, we had been budgeting, we'd budgeted about fifty-nine hundred dollars for the treasurer quote-unquote line item. It looks like maybe the suggested change to that would be to go up to sixty-eight hundred. And then previously, we had been looking at, our last year's budget for assistant treasurer was eighty-three hundred and it looks like the suggestion would maybe be to come down to sixty-five ninety-two fifty or something like that. Maybe we'll round that up to sixty.
Assistant treasurer is sixty-five?
Yeah, sorry, Guy, there's a, should be a copy of this for you. Unless I didn't make it.
And treasurer was up to?
Guy, sir, a copy.
There were more copies of that.
We have a big game, we need our bucks.
No, if you get.
Do I have to do this? Yeah.
Is there another copy still?
Not, the total.
The original, the total treasurer, now we're going on to fifty-nine hundred bucks.
What's fifty-nine hundred? No, no, if you add them up, the treasury department.
So we're going up nine hundred to the treasurer.
Oh, you're adding both together.
Yes, but you're subtracting the assistant treasurer. So we're actually, the total treasurer, treasury department used to be, in F Y twenty-twenty, it was fourteen-two.
Okay.
And now it's thirteen-two-nine-two and fifty cents.
Thirteen-two-nine, right?
Yeah, and fifty cents.
So the overall amount, it used to be, right, I mean, like Joseph's saying.
It's, right, it used to be divided up, it was just divided up differently.
There was, there was less budgeted for treasurer and more budgeted for assistant treasurer and now they're a little bit closer to each other, but they're overall net lower a thousand, a little over a thousand dollars.
I have one question for Sarah.
Yeah.
I assume we can find it in here, but you probably know exactly why. That nine hundred dollar savings, is that due to your rate difference with Samara or is there another reason why?
This is all just estimation. So it was Samara telling me how to do the formula and then us guessing how many hours we work. And she told me to do it based on fifty weeks a year, which I don't really take a lot of time off. And she told me to do it based on fifty weeks a year, which I don't really, take a lot of time off, so I was kind of iffy about that one. Um, but, uh, she, um, that's how she explained it to me, and it was just kind of numbers I punched in there, and I noticed it was a little under, and I was a little afraid, because it might actually take me longer to do some things, even though I'm making less, I know I'm still learning, so I.
That's okay. We've got nine-hundred dollars to the good here.
Are you, are you comfortable with the?
Well, right, I guess that's right. That's the question, though. Are you really comfortable with these numbers, though? Does the, does the week, does the calculating only based on fifty weeks a year worry you? Should we not be doing that? Maybe, should we be doing the whole fifty-two weeks?
I mean, I haven't taken any weeks off here, since I've been here.
But that's just you, correct?
Yeah, like I have vacations in Jamaica, but I was coming here anyways.
So you're only talking sixteen times seventeen, sixty hours to.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Yeah. But we, e- even if we bumped, uh, even if we, you know, kind of fluffed up the hours in accordance with yours specifically, since it might take you a little bit longer, we would still have savings opposed to last year, so.
Right, right, and that was one thing, I, I mean, I wasn't certain, um, like if you wanted to keep it the same or if you're trying to go under, but I don't wanna end up lusting things up, because if I do have to work more.
That's good.
Learning.
That's good. I, I'm good with all that. Joe, Joseph?
And I, I think going under is always a good thing, but especially being the first year. I think that if we just allocate the same as last year, then, then it's not a bad thing. And then if we go under, then we'll just.
That's great, and then we'll know when it works by that point. Yeah, I, I, I agree.
So spend the savings, is what you're saying, okay.
Well, let's, yeah, let's, uh.
Not my first year, I mean.
Plan some, get all the savings if it's savings.
So we'll keep it at fifty-nine-hundred for the treasurer's rate later, and eighty-three-hundred for the assistant.
I just want to actually. Especially after hearing what Samara's.
To mention that this budget will not start until July of twenty, uh, twenty-twenty.
That's right.
By then, hopefully, even though I know you will, you'll have another eight months of experience. And, um, quite honestly, I, I, I feel justified that, you know, you should receive the salary that we had attempted to set for the treasurer, which was nineteen-seventy-five an hour, so that people were all on the same, there was parity throughout the whole system. And the thing that troubles me a little bit is that people are gonna look at some of these figures and say, why are men making more money than women? And that reflects in this bill. Uh, this, this, uh, this thing of paying her seventeen dollars an hour and me nineteen dollars an hour. People are gonna misconstrue that and say, wow, you know, what happened to pay parity? So I think that we should all be on the same page with the heads of the departments, treasurer, um, and clerk, at the same rate that we researched five years ago and found to be a viable rate for people doing the kind of work we do with the size town we are. I just wanted to interject that.
Can I say, I asked for that pay rate, because I don't think I should be making as much as you, because you've been doing this a lot longer and have a lot more experience and wisdom in the job.
But that's not true, Sarah, because we voted you in as treasurer. So it might take you a little bit longer to learn something, but you're worth the pay, because that's your job.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
I just, you know, I just think it's.
Dave, um, this kind of thing, let's flip into this.
Well, no, I was just gonna say, I don't, uh, what I'd say is, I do trust Sarah's opinion, which is why I also trust Sarah's opinion of thinking at the moment, there's a lot of things that she doesn't know about this job, and therefore, she feels more comfortable and thinks it's more sensible for her rate not to be the same rate that Samara's rate was when Samara had been treasurer for six years.
Okay, but.
That isn't to say that that shouldn't change in future, but as of right now, I wouldn't second guess any of the suggestions that Sarah's made or choices that we made. But that isn't to say that we shouldn't factor into the budget for the upcoming fiscal year.
Because you'll be.
Potentially spending more money on that position as we adjust the rate.
We don't know who's gonna be elected in March.
We don't.
That's true.
So, but in fairness, if, if someone was to be elected who has, I mean, unless Samara runs again, or someone used to run a town, and that I'm not familiar with, no one's going to be elected who is going to have, I don't think, more experience than Sarah has, so. I mean, the, the, the rates that we, that we pay people for some of these positions, maybe not all of them, but for some of them, experience is a factor in what that rate is, and would have been a factor in the analysis that Stan did when he did it. All of that getting around saying, I'm not sure now where we wanna land on what we're going to budget for these positions now. What I'll say is, just to throw a number out there, the, the current budgeted amounts that, um, that we were just discussing is a little over eleven-hundred dollars less than what we had budgeted previously.
Yeah, I thought it was Sarah. Unless my math is incorrect.
No, I think it's a little over eleven-hundred. Eleven oh four is what I came up with when I quickly calculated it. I mean, maybe I've.
Eleven hundred over last year over, over next year.
Yeah.
Hmm, well, the point is, when we get to March.
Oh, I wasn't looking at the, um, variance there.
The point is, when we get to March, then we've left ourselves a bit behind on the April in terms of the salary, because if something.
No, you're right, you're right.
God forbid something happen to you.
Well, I could die tomorrow.
If somebody comes in, or that little lady that was competing with you, that was copping or whatever, and now she would be getting the seventeen dollars an hour instead of what the, what the going rate is for that position. I think that's where I'm dovetailing to what you're talking about. I'm like Gwen's talking about. I don't, I don't like it. I, I like the idea of keeping, like I says, God forbid it's something happen to Sarah, we're gonna get in the treasurer next, next March. I'd like to see that rate be what the rate should be, and especially given two things. Especially given it's July first it starts, and especially given that Sarah will have been here eight months, and she'll, you'll be pretty well up to speed by that, we know. And so, cutting her out of that, of, of, of the right rate until July of twenty-twenty-one, I don't know if I agree with that. I like, I like the idea of what Gwen and Guy are talking about.
Well, look, one thing I'm gonna say is, we're, what is not on the table for discussion right now is changing the rate, the current pay rate.
Is the budget.
No, we're.
Right, okay, so then, then we need to talk specifics about what you're, what you're, because.
I'm not talking about today's rate, I'm talking about starting July first, twenty-twenty.
Right.
Okay, so, um, so we can look at doing this, so.
So basically, people are going to see a year and a half, a year, a year and eight months at that rate, and she'll, I'm sorry, dude, I'm repeating myself.
No, it's okay.
And of course, you've got another eight months or something like that till July, probably. And then you've got another year on top of that, so it's okay. Twenty months that you'd be going under this rate, I.
I would say that Sarah was, was well aware of that when, when she made the suggestion that her rate be changed to that. And I would also say, in regards to who is going to be elected, we'll just have to, if it's not Sarah, we'll just have to tackle that when we get there. What happens when, you know, somebody that just retired from Danny May moves to town, and when we elect them and their rate, we would have to, we'd have to take that when we get there. So I think that should respect Sarah's.
So.
Will we raise that rate once we get proof of the budget? Or are we gonna like do that through town meeting? Yes?
No, you'd have to have a special town meeting to raise it, or you'd have to do it, you know, budget, a new budget, in the following year.
Right, for twenty-twenty-two.
I'm not sure where you're asking, to raise, raise what? Raise the, the pay rate for the treasurer position?
I forgot what I was thinking, um.
Okay, let me just.
Right, we have to, well, we, that's it. We would have, yeah, not too bad, I see. We have to raise the degree upon, uh, if we decided to, if we had a new treasurer, other than Sarah, and we wanted to make the rate up to where it's supposed to be, whatever part of that is, eighteen, nineteen, twenty dollars an hour, whatever it is, how do we do about that? We can't do that until the following budget, or can we do that through a town meeting? Or can we do that through the select board voting?
We can do that anytime.
We, we can change that as well.
In the same way that we change the rates.
That's true. We change it with the request, I mean, that's.
A month ago, I mean, right. I mean, we, we can set the rates and change the rates for employees of the town whenever we want.
Okay.
Uh, wait, wait, um.
Well, I mean, within reason, I'm not saying, but we don't have, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be set as part of a.
A budget is voted at a telling me.
Right, but that's different than what we've budgeted, because when we budget, we're budgeting for what we anticipate the cost of that position being. One choice we could make, if we got to that point, is we could bu, we could choose to vote a higher hourly rate for the treasurer, but restrict the number of hours that the treasurer can work, so as not to exceed the amount of money that we've budgeted.
That's where the tickler goes, you can't increase the budget. You can't, you can't increase.
I mean, how is, how is.
Well, again, like, what my thinking was, that when we did all this research four years ago, we were paying the positions, not the people. So the town clerk got this money, the treasurer got that money, and it didn't matter who the personality was. It was what the, the, um, what it dictated as being the treasurer and the, and the.
Right, and I don't disagree that we shouldn't get back to that. I, I agree. But the, the challenge at hand right now is, we need to figure out what we're going to budget for the next fiscal year for these positions. And the thing I'll point out is that, and maybe Joseph has done the same thing, if we were to take the numbers that, that Sarah has worked up, if we were to increase the rate, the budgeted rate for that treasurer position to nineteen-seventy-five, rather than the seventeen dollars it's at right now, that's an increase of eleven-hundred dollars over just the hours that are currently here, and that's based on fifty hours, or fifty weeks in the year. So we can, we can do that. We're then essentially going to be netting out the assistant and treasurer about three-hundred dollars more than it was last year, if we go that direction.
Okay, and what we did last month, or when Sarah made the request, basically, we just juggled money in, in the budget of the, of the existing budget, the treasurer's budget. We didn't really change the treasurer's budget, we just changed the labor hours, or, or.
No, that should come up as a surplus, because you decided that the budget that you've set, now you wanna diminish it by two dollars an hour, so that would give a surplus in that particular position.
That's true.
Right, right, but potentially, through the course of the whole fiscal year, it may be.
May work out fine.
It may work out fine, yeah, wait on it. Um, Joseph.
So weren't your comment was just to leave it like it?
Well, no, I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, based on this, if, if, if our concern is to, to make sure that we're budgeting enough money for what we're currently projecting, the hour, the amount of hours over the course of a year to be at a higher rate for the treasurer, I'd argue we need to increase what we were talking about, not leave it the same as what we'd actually, we should go up three or four hundred dollars. Well, I'm just, I'm just calculating numbers, which is, if you take nineteen, if you take two dollars and seventy-five cents, which is what the increase of rates is between what Sarah is currently being paid and what we may want the position to be paid, over four hundred hours, that's eleven-hundred dollars. So that's eleven-hundred dollars in addition to the budgeted cost that's already on the work sheet.
On top of that, I wanted to bring up that, um, you had mentioned that you might want more hours than what's here, like four hundred hours, like you, you know, that's calculated off fifty weeks. You might go over that, and if we, if the chances that somebody else is elected, we might wanna add some hours to that as well, 'cause you don't know, you know, what their situation would be. Um, regardless of the rate change, would it, would you feel comfortable adding like twenty-five hours to that? So it's like four hundred twenty-five hours instead of four hundred?
No, I, I would be fine with that, 'cause I would have done it by fifty-two weeks myself.
So you, twenty-five would be more than, yeah, like what you're asking for.
Still nine more than sixteen of the other eight for the two weeks.
So if, I just, I just grabbed twenty-five, 'cause it's a nice number. Um, if we did that, it would bring, it would bring the, uh, the, um, treasurer's budget up to seven thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars, um, which would bring the total treasury department's budget up to thirteen thousand eight hundred and fourteen, uh, dollars, which is still a savings of what it was.
How much is saved?
What was budgeted last year. But that's not considering if we up the, the rate. 'Cause if we do up the rate and we do up the hours, which I think it's prudent to up the hours, regardless of what the rate is, it's going to be a good amount over what was budgeted the previous year. And we can, we can do that quite easily. What, what was the old rate? Was it nineteen or nineteen-seventy?
Nineteen-seventy-five.
So if, what's fifty-nine-hundred divided by nineteen-seventy-five?
Fifteen-hundred?
Fifty-nine-hundred divided by, I'm sorry, sixty-four twenty-four, six thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars divided by nineteen dollars and seventy-five cents. That will give us how many hours?
Uh, three hundred and twenty-five point two-six-five, I think, or something.
So if you go to four hundred.
But that's the, yeah, that's, oh, okay.
Yeah, there's something, I'm not.
Well, I mean, yeah, right.
See what I said?
The actuals from nineteen don't really work out to be.
No, not at all.
Round rate, but, um.
Those were Samara's numbers.
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, are we sure that nineteen-seventy-five is the correct, is the rate that we would have?
Yes, that's the rate that Samara, Samara and I both received the same rate.
Yeah, so I don't know, fifty-nine-hundred doesn't really, I mean, we've probably rounded things to, I mean, because we're not, we don't.
Well, I think by the same token, you had the assistant treasurer, uh, maybe a few more hours. Uh, there's assistant treasurer in there.
Yeah, and the, the assistant treasurer is a little bit of a complication, 'cause it's a blend of multiple rates, so it's. Okay, so here's what I, I'd suggest we consider doing then. I mean, I think we should.
We kinda have to figure the rate thing out first, if that is a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think it's, yeah, I mean, I, I think it is a valid point that when we're budgeting, I mean, not knowing, 'cause we don't know who the treasurer is going to be. And I, I completely agree with Guy's point that really we should, that there should be rates for the positions, and those are the rates that we should be budgeting off of, not based on necessarily what we might be paying the person who's in the job right this second. So based on that, and I would also fall back to, you know, while this isn't exact, this isn't the, I'm not saying we're necessarily getting to this point, but at a certain point, we may need to limit the number of hours that certain people work in order to keep ourselves within the budget that we've set. As long as the business of the town doesn't horrendously suffer from doing that. Well, I mean, that's the reality. It's like, it's like, that's the way the world works.
And when we set those hours.
People can't necessarily work an unlimited amount of hours, so.
Well, I'm not suggesting, but I'd say when you're talking about treasurer's position or something of importance like that, and it's standard every week that the person puts that amount of hours in.
Right, but I guess I'd. Right, but I guess I'd also say it was standard that the treasurer didn't work fifty-two, fifty-two weeks a year.
We never had a vacation yet.
We've not, we've not had that be a problem before, so it may be, I'm not saying that that is something we need to be concerned with, but at a certain point, we set this budget, and it is our responsibility to work within that budget, of course.
So what do you?
So if we're leaving, if we leave it as, as it was last year.
Well, the overall, yeah, I mean, we could leave the overall amount where it was last year. Of course, we're also, we've all been discussing the fact that because of, because of the situation, that because of things being different now than when Samara was treasurer, Samara didn't want to work hours. So she shifted a lot of things off onto the assistant treasurer.
Right, right. She also had Louise, who was a, you know, bookkeeper, and Louise did a lot of that, that legwork.
Right, right. Things were different for a while when Louise, so, uh, I mean.
The treasurer's hours are gonna have to increase.
Increase, because she's doing more.
Right, yeah, so I think that it's prudent to go at least no less than what you prepared. And then if you think that you need slightly more hours than what's on here, I don't see a problem.
No, maybe.
I think eight is the healthy average, because some weeks I'm here three, three hours, some weeks I'm here eight to twelve. You know, if I'm in like three days after work, I come in and do stuff and.
Uh-huh.
So you, would you wanna just add an additional sixteen hours to that four hundred? I mean, I know this is kind of, it's kind of complex.
Why don't you just change the four hundred hours to nineteen seventy-five?
Well, I think that's a slightly separate issue, and I, I agree, that's an issue that we should discuss, but it doesn't change the fact that she might need,
the time.
She feels as though she might need slightly more hours than, than what's budgeted here.
You're worried.
No, I think this is a good average, eight I'm comfortable with.
Are you?
Okay.
Like it might, like I said, it might be three one week and twelve the next, but on average, I think eight is about what I need to get everything done comfortably.
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh. But.
Yeah, but, but at fifty-two weeks.
Fifty-two weeks a year.
Right.
Yeah, so we would have to add an additional two weeks, so it'd be.
Yeah.
Right.
An additional six, so that would, four hundred and sixteen hours.
Four hundred and sixteen, yeah.
So do, do you think, you would want four sixteen?
I mean. Yes.
Okay, so that's, that's one issue, and now the separate issue, which is a very valid issue, is, are we gonna change the rate from seventeen to nineteen seventy-five?
Okay. Okay, so now we can consider.
But I think, do, would we, do we do a motion to accept this, or do we all agree that, that the hours being four sixteen and then all of the other hours as they are, is that a good choice?
I'm sorry, what?
Would we all agree that everything given on this sheet, except for the one change of, of the, of Sarah's hours going up to four sixteen, is that a, a prudent?
Yeah.
The, the same. Oh, Sarah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Estimation of, of, you know, that's a prudent course to take.
Yeah, I, yeah, well, guys different, and Marie, guess where they're at, correct? Really? Okay, so it would just be the four sixteen, and then we're gonna talk about the rate.
Yeah. And then the rate is a, a different issue.
Separation. I'm, I'm good with sixteen hours is only a time, two hundred and seventy-two.
I don't know, I think it's reasonable.
At seventeen dollars an hour, that's only two hundred and seventy-two bucks, I mean.
Maybe it's not seventeen dollars an hour.
We have to discuss.
We have to discuss them, right.
Um, okay, so what I, what I'd like to avoid us doing, though we're well into this point, is really completely derailing any progress anywhere else on this, which is fine, I mean, we need to hammer this out eventually.
You want to table it for this minute, or do you just move on?
Well, what I'd like to consider is that we plug in a couple of numbers, and then
Okay.
try to come back and see where that nets out in relation to other things that we've done.
But you're explaining what, what.
Uh, so that we're not just looking at it in isolation, that we're looking in conjunction with, yeah, yeah, there's other things.
Because we have networked.
Yes.
I heard the good news.
I look at them.
So I guess what I'd say then is, I would, I would propose, because I do think that it makes sense for us to look at the full budgeted, to budget it at the nineteen seventy-five rate.
So that makes that budget what?
So that makes the treasurer position.
Where it says tax, treasurer and tax collector, that one, right?
Yeah, treasurer, and that would make the treasurer and tax collector eight thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
And again, I'm just saying we plug these in now, we see what things net out, and maybe we just, eight, two, one, six.
Eight thousand two hundred and sixteen.
What is this?
The treasurer and tax collector.
The tax collector position?
And it's four hundred hour, four, sixteen hours?
That was, that's four hundred and sixteen hours at nineteen seventy-five rate. Okay?
You're talking about a separate case?
Yep.
I have fifty-nine hundred bucks, one more.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why it's changing, right.
That's what, we're changing it, we're changing it. But it's last year versus.
Eight thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars.
Because Samara wasn't working the hours.
Then, we're gonna go down to the.
I'm right there, question mark there, okay.
Then we're gonna go down to the assistant treasurer line, and we're gonna, for purposes of rounding, we're gonna round that to six, five, nine, three.
Okay.
To, where are we, where are we?
Six, five, nine?
Three, six, five, nine, three.
Okay, so we're changing all these numbers, okay.
So it's, it's gonna net out to be more than what we have, what we budgeted previously. Not a, not a huge amount more, and again, depending on what we've, where we net out with other things, we'll see what actual impact it has, but. Is everybody okay with us plugging those in for a moment?
I, I think so.
So for the assistant, uh, I'm sorry, assistant treasury, you're taking the three thousand twenty-nine, sixty-two, and the sixty-three hundred.
Well, like you, like you said, we need to bottom line, of course, the line.
And it comes to sixty-four.
Right, right, yeah, I don't think it's gonna be an amount that is gonna cause us any problems, and, yeah, and it's a safer number, and I completely agree with you guys, that it make, we should be budgeting for.
The position.
For the position.
Right.
Uh, and we should be budgeting for what we believe is a realistic amount of hours based on what we know. There's no sense in us putting in numbers that we are pretty sure are gonna be wrong anyway. Um, okay, so, at long last now, we're gonna move on to page three. The good thing is some of these, I think, could go fairly quickly.
Yeah, and then we're, then we're up to the highway fund.
And then we're gonna have a discussion about what we did after that.
All right, when you go to page three, you, you're just going over the select board, you're just not putting any figuring for the select board?
The select board did, was fine.
That's on page two, which, for the moment, we have not discussed any changes to that, although we might.
Oh, okay. It's all the same. Okay, so that, you plug in sixty-five hundred for the select board?
Yeah.
We plugged in the same amount for the moment, but none of these are.
Okay, no, no, I get that, I just want to make sure that I have the, yeah, maybe it's fifty-five, fifty, yeah, okay.
Yeah, same, yes. So moving on to page three. First item is the town report expense, I think we should put that at seven hundred dollars. Last year, it cost us a six, sixty-three, and I've talked to the guy, and the paper went up a little bit, but I think we can actually mail it cheaper than we did last year, so we might actually be able to have it end up being a little bit cheaper than that.
Do you remember how many copies we actually did?
In the future. We printed two hundred and thirty copies, and we mailed two hundred and five or something.
And it was at a fifty? Do you remember what the postage rate was at that time?
The postage rate was, it was, we mailed them last year at first class postage, which was, I think, fifty-five cents, something like that.
Were we able to do that magazine for fifty cent?
Um, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but there's, there's a standard, it was pre-sorted, so it gets a little bit cheaper, but we can, we can,
Okay, no, I'm just. Because it's been an increase. Yeah.
If we get it done soon enough, we could actually mail it at standard rate, which is quite a bit cheaper.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, the postage on this is not an enormous amount, but it might save us a hundred bucks.
Well, the only thing is that the postage is going up, going up from last year.
Yeah.
That's what I just wanted to reflect.
Right, and the cost of the paper has gone up slightly, so I think seven hundred dollars is a reasonable thing to budget.
Good, okay.
I mean, by then, who knows, but that seems safe. Uh, planning commission expense, we budgeted a hundred dollars last year. The only time we've really needed to budget significantly more than that was when they were in the midst of doing a town plan. There's no town plan for a couple more years, so I think we should leave it, well, I was gonna say, we leave it, we leave it at a hundred.
Yeah, that's close.
Um, I think. Uh, abatements, we did budget twenty-five hundred for abatements last year.
That was for the Cutts family with the fire, and we abated them because they didn't have use of the home anymore,
Right.
and it couldn't be a taxable entity, so I suggested that we cut it in half, which is unfortunately, when it happened in December, which is half our year. So abatements this year, there is nothing to be abated, other than some small taxes, you know, some differences of interest, six dollars here, seven dollars there, but nowhere near twenty-one hundred dollars, but I don't know, do you have any?
Should we budget a hundred bucks?
Uh, I would think maybe two hundred and fifty dollars minimum, yeah.
This is what you're saving the money. Two hundred and fifty.
Okay.
It better to have a little wiggle room.
Yeah.
So we're down, we have to, we're saving some money.
Okay, uh, legal notices, we used to budget eight hundred, we cut that down to six hundred last year. It looks like the rough projection for current fiscal year at the moment is maybe for it to come in at five thirty-eight, maybe.
That's the stuff that we put in the newspaper stuff?
Legal notices.
Legal notices.
They go to the base, like, the bidding.
So it's the bids.
And so forth, okay.
Um.
So you have a better handle?
I think, yeah, I mean, we've been, each of the ones we've done are anywhere from sixty to a hundred bucks.
You know, we've been doing. Okay.
I mean, I, I think we should leave it at six hundred.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay.
Seminars and mileage, we've typically budgeted fifteen hundred. I don't know how close we've ever really come to hitting that fifteen hundred in recent years.
Well, the, 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 the problem is that most of these seminars or meetings are about sixty-five dollars per member of VLCT. And I would like to suggest that we have a little more, uh, participation in these seminars, because they're extremely important from the select board on down. And I think that, um, you're missing a, a, a real big opportunity by not attending some of these things. So the listers, the treasurer, the select board, uh, most of those, they have seminars that are really, really very interesting, and also will help you do a better job. So I, I'm just saying that I don't think fifteen hundred dollars is necessary, but I would say a thousand anyway, if everybody attended, and we got some, especially if you have new members for select board, you know, things of that nature where they don't have any idea, these seminars are excellent.
Yeah.
And that, is that also including the, uh, and the mileage?
It includes mileage, right.
It's fifty-five dollars, fifty-five cents a mile, so, yeah, I think a thousand dollars would be a.
Okay, so let's, let's drop that down to a thousand. Town office electric, we bumped up to eleven hundred.
And I think that we're pretty much close to budget, the rate went up this year.
I think we're always pretty close.
That's still.
Went from point one-two to point one-four per kilowatt hour, not a, you know, not a great deal, but it is, everything is escalating slowly but surely. But we seem to be right on mark with the, uh, what we're paying for electric, so that was a good thing.
So let's leave it ele, at eleven hundred.
Yeah.
Um, the church electric, we've.
Two fifty-two.
We've budgeted two fifty, a couple of years ago, we maybe went a little bit over, we looked like we might be relatively on track. You know, one thing I'll say is that in the coming year, they do intend to use it, the building a lot more, which is a good thing.
That's a good thing.
We might wanna bump that up slightly, because we might, yeah, not, yeah, let's go to three hundred, because.
Or three hundred or something like that.
Yeah. They, hopefully, you're gonna use it.
Go play, just to use it more.
I'm into that.
Um, town office telephone, seventeen fifty.
Seventeen twenty, wow, that's a good one.
Has that increased?
Uh, no, that's pretty much stayed pretty, pretty straight, and basically, that's for our landline and for also the lines that we do our security and so forth, so that's, that's pretty solid, that number.
Okay, so let's leave that at seventeen fifty. Uh, town office fuel, we've had a twenty-five hundred.
Again, that's, that's like trying to gaze in your crystal ball.
Yeah.
Uh, we've been pretty lucky, uh, we've been very careful with thermostats and so forth, but
Yeah.
one year it's two dollars and fifty cents a gallon, the next year it's three dollars, but, um, so, like I say, I, I think the, um, I, I would like to keep it at probably two thousand.
You think we can go down to two thousand?
Um, yes.
I mean, we budgeted twenty-five hundred the last couple, we were just under two thousand two years ago, I'm not sure where we're gonna be at the moment.
Yeah, I know, I think we're.
It's gotten it kind of close.
Yeah.
Yeah, we.
I don't know what we'd use the, with, with fuel.
Four, two sixty, two seventy, yeah.
Uh, let me just, hold on a second, hold on.
I was thinking.
You go to the next number, I'll see, I'll see.
I was thinking we'd leave it at twenty-five hundred personally.
Uh, let's see, all right.
But we can come back to that.
I mean, the geopolitical environment is super stable, so.
What's that?
It's the geopolitical environment.
Exactly, yeah, what can possibly change about that? Um, the church fuel.
So do we deal with it, we're leaving twenty-five hundred?
I think we should leave it at twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred, yeah. Uh, I think we should leave it at twenty-five hundred also.
Seems like a general consensus.
Uh, church building fuel, we've done fifty or sixty bucks.
What is that?
Me, I don't, it's.
There's no fuel.
Well, I think before it was a gas stove, kitchen range, it was, they were using it.
I mean, I think, is it, have we just been budgeting that thinking that maybe they'd be able to use something?
With full thinking.
I don't know, they can't use it.
What's that, uh, where are you quoting?
There's not really any time, right?
Perkins meeting.
Have we ever used that?
They use it on a page three.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
I don't know, like this.
So we're good, zero?
All right, let's go with church, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily seem like we've done anything.
Sure, sure.
What, I'm sorry, I lost you. Where are I?
We're, uh, we're at the Brookline Church building fuel.
What happens if they fix, what happens if they fix?
They can't fix the heaters.
No, I'm talking about the gas range in the kitchen, because their main concern is trying to get the kitchen done, but if they get a new gas stove.
Well, so the thing is. Then the, that's, that's, that's partly what the meeting house funds will have to pay.
Then it's maybe used.
Just give us more than fifty dollars.
If they cost you more than zero.
No, I mean, for fuel, fuel.
Right.
I'm not gonna tell you what our gas bill is for our cooking.
Believe it or not, thirteen gallons.
Oh, you, shut up, yeah, we're fed.
Yeah, exactly.
For a few years, I.
Thirteen gallons of propane.
Yeah.
So what do you keep the, what's the fuel for the?
The fuel, we're gonna put to zero, because we see no indication, there's really any reason there should be.
Cookers, heaters, or dryer.
I cook with it.
I use a dryer.
Reason there should be.
Zero, what did you decide on the dollar?
One, one hundred for three years for eighty bucks?
Leave it the same.
Leave it at twenty-five hundred.
Because I use thirteen gallons of five dollars a gallon, that's what takes them off, is the.
Okay.
All right. Um, computer services, maintenance, support.
Two twenty-one, yeah, seven ninety-eight, uh, eight hundred dollars, because the year before, we did a double billion the same year, and I looked at it, and it's, uh, pretty much where we are, about eight hundred dollars.
So you're going to eight hundred, okay, okay, so that's down a hundred bucks from what we had budgeted last year. Um, fire alarm, we've been budgeting four hundred, we maybe were a little, we were a bit over that two years ago.
Uh, yeah. But now we have the church online, because he inspected the church, and they were on a per call basis, so that costs a hundred and some odd dollars for the church, for the, um, fire extinguishers and the tags that they have to do, so I would suggest that you keep it where you are.
Well, should we go, should we go up to?
Keep it there or add, because they added the account, go up to five hundred, what is it at?
Four.
Four.
Yeah.
Go to five?
I would say go to five.
Because they added another building room.
Uh, yeah, maybe.
Does that make sense to you, Guy?
Yes, it does.
I think we should go up to five hundred. Um, legal services.
Legal. Oh, boy.
Touchwood, we've been lucky recently.
Very lucky by. As we.
Thirty thousand dollars this year.
As you go through the budget, you can use that, that three thousand dollars if you wanna up, or, you know, do something different, you know, to maybe bring the budget down, but, um, knock on wood, you know, the lawyers get two hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Ten hours, we figured ten hours, yeah.
Next year will be three, yeah, never mind, I'm not gonna, my brother's retired, turning out of the game, up instead of the select board.
So we'll just leave it at three thousand?
Three thousand.
You're leaving.
We dropped it from thirty-five hundred from the previous year.
Yeah.
Let's keep it at three.
Okay.
And hope we continue to be lucky and not be spend much of it, if any.
Hope we do.
Uh, rescue services, we will get that number.
Yeah, we should, I thought that was in the mail, I thought that.
I have the mutual aid dues, Gary LaVornia emailed me the mutual aid dues the other day, so I know that one when we get to that, but I have heard about rescue services.
Who builds those? Rescue.
Rescue.
Rescuing, that one, this line item is.
And we have to pay them for, for them covering our area?
Yes.
Yes, monthly.
So we'll get that number.
All right, so we'll read that out, and same thing with the.
Same thing with the. Same thing with the annual request from the fire department. Although I, my assumption is as likely to be 9,000 again.
Yeah, I think...
They're, they're, I think we should put in 9,000 for now.
And we're leaving the other one blank for now, right?
The rescue services, yeah, because we don't know that number.
Now, mutual aid...
Mutual aid dues will be 9,969. So that's, uh...
Adopted purchases.
So that's just under 300 from last year.
290.
Um, copies, so this is over the contract allowance.
Okay, and I just looked at the meter. And we're gonna be very close to our contractual agreement, which is 2,000 copies a month, which is 24,000. So we should be, I would say 50 dollars is a comfortable figure at this point.
50, okay.
50 dollars?
50.
So go down 100?
Yep.
Guy has sharpened his pencil, I like it. Copy or lease contract. Well, no, it makes sense, I mean, that's...
We pay, anything over the 2,400, we pay 0.09 a copy.
Uh huh.
So it's...
It's not gonna kill us. Um, copy or lease contract, do we have any sense of whether that's gonna go up?
No, that's gonna stay the same because we have, I signed a four or five year contract. And I was, uh, I asked you if you could, you know, find out, did they give any reason why they...
They, I never got to know anyone.
But basically, it's still the same, it's, they've been charging us, uh, well, it was supposed to be 94, but 107 dollars a month. So 107 times 12...
That was 117.
117, I'm sorry, times 12, who's got, anybody got a calculator?
117 times 12?
Yep.
I got a head.
1404?
That's, uh... Yeah, 1405 I had down there, yep.
Okay, so let's bump that up to 1405.
Yep.
And, okay, so we're going up 205 hours. NEMR is coming.
Uh, okay, town property maintenance. So that's mowing of...
The cemeteries.
The cemeteries that we have to...
The town office.
Office.
The schoolyard.
The ball field.
We just did that, town property maintenance?
I mean, I think we should probably keep it at 1,200.
1,200, yes, I, I think so too. Because I know there's gonna be some bumps in that.
Uh, trash removal.
That was the guy we hired, 50 dollars a month.
Right.
And I don't know if we've ever used them, but basically if there's an overflow and people put all the stuff, I've been carting it down, Bruce has taken some stuff. You know, we've been trying to take care of our self, so...
Fred's gone, isn't he? We don't know.
I don't know, I try calling every number.
Yeah. Um, I mean, I think it still makes sense for us to budget some money to deal with it.
Yes.
I, I think so too, for when something happens that we have to deal with. Um, what do we think about maybe 500 bucks instead of 600?
Yep, 500 is good.
Okay.
Uh, dues from VLCT, that's something we don't know about. Do we know anything from them yet?
No, no, I didn't see the, I didn't, I haven't seen that yet.
Okay, so we'll look into that.
Yeah, we have...
Uh, Wyndham Regional Commission?
That we have 123610. So, I'm sorry, uh, 123610, 1259 is the actual figure.
Okay.
1259, 1259, okay. All right. Uh, NEMR.
This is a big disaster. I want it...
We have that in correspondence.
Yeah, it should be in your mail, and what is it, 5,000 dollars? And basically, NEMR is involved in cybersecurity. And they haven't really raised their raise in years. And if you look at other security things, it blows, it blows NEMR right out of the water. NEMR is still the least expensive one. And they can pretty much control all the modules that we do. The state is looking for a new vendor for possibly the listers, but that's still in the, that's in the wind. And I'll be honest with you, if you get state involved in some of these modules, you're asking for problems, but that's another story. The bottom line is that most people that I've spoken with agree that NEMR is the best deal that we can get. Five grand is a big thing to swallow, but the bottom line, we haven't had a raise in years and years. And now with the side, the, the security breaches that we're experiencing all over the world, they had to update all their software, all their stuff. It comes with a price. They had to add one or two personalities onto it. So to me, I understand it, do I like it? No, but it's a fact of doing business.
And speaking from experience, they are always so helpful when there's a problem.
Their support.
They have great support.
There was one time when I went to do something and I looked at Guy and I said, I don't know what happened, but I said, NEMR is gone. There's not one thing in the NEMR module, nothing. So he called and within...
Yeah, we were able to resolve.
Be an hour.
The support is A1, A1.
Yeah.
And they're, they're also providing online webinars as part of the price crease. I know it's not a big thing, but it is part of it.
No, that's true.
So that's, will be very helpful for me.
So that's where, when we were talking about maybe some places where we can move some other stuff around. That NEMR was the biggest, biggest jump that we've had this year.
Okay.
That's pretty small, considering.
So maybe we should have legal services as 2,000 and then we have 1,000 for the NEMR.
Well, wait.
Well, again, that's, we slid out of the joke.
Can we just drag the Trump campaign or...
Don't stop.
Directly.
Okay, all right, so that's...
The rule in this office is no politics.
Okay, so that's going to 5,000.
Your father's, he was such a nice guy.
Moving to the next line item, the, um, wind solid waste landfill fees, we don't know yet. Um, I'm for the moment assuming that they'll stay fairly close to what they were last year, but I'll know more after the meeting next week, I guess. So let's leave that blank for the time being. Actually, no, let's put in last year's as an assumption for now.
Question mark, 3643?
3643, yeah.
Okay, well, I think, that question.
Um, recycling costs, so... This is something, I don't want to get into a lengthy discussion about it now, but we need to... We need to decide whether we want to just budget an amount or whether we want to warn a separate amount again, like we did last year.
An article?
An article. My personal view, and again, I don't, I don't want to, we'll talk more about it in, I, I actually think we should consider only budgeting 16,000. Down from the 18,000 that we budgeted for this current fiscal year.
Okay, I haven't seen the...
But we need to kind of look and see exactly where we're at, where we're at six months through, which we're almost at a point of being...
So you just want to leave that blank for July?
Let's leave it blank for now because we then, I think we need to, both, we need to figure out what we want to budget. And then we also need to decide, do we think we should warn it as a separate article or should we just budget for it? I personally think based on the reaction of the voters at town meeting last year to the 18, unless we're talking about budgeting 20. I don't think we need to warn it. I think we should budget it because I think the support for continuing to offer recycling at that cost...
Yes.
Was unanimous. So I don't think we need to waste people's time of warning the article for it unless we, unless we end up thinking that we're gonna have to budget 22,000 dollars.
Right, and unless somebody brings over to town meeting says that they want to be contentious about it, they want to talk about it, they want to...
Yeah, well, the 16, 18,000 dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah. Yeah. But I've not really seen any evidence that that's likely to happen though. So anyway, that's a reason to say, let's skip that entirely for now. But that would be, could you pull a report of just the triple T and, um...
Not now.
You don't have to do it now.
Yeah, right.
But the triple T and the Rattlebury salvage to this, you know, for July 1st to now, and then we'll kind of extrapolate a little bit.
Let me just, I just want to add this little thing. If you do include it in the budget, it's gonna move our budget drastically higher.
Good point.
So, okay, no, no, but people need to know that because last year when we approved the budget, it was just for the items.
Right.
And then the articles were added all into the budget.
So it was just the one article, correct?
Uh, I think that's the only article we had.
So when, when it was presented in March, we had that total to 290,000 or 300,000, I think it was.
363, I think.
No, it wasn't that much.
You had a total budget last year?
No, I'm talking about municipal.
We don't need it.
See, I'm talking about the highway and the, the highway and the...
That light, it's not right there. I thought it was around 300,000, 3,000 or 300,000.
But so what you're saying is that we should, we should just, uh, like if we do include...
If you include it in the budget, if you include it in the budget, it's gonna make that budget go way down.
Exactly.
Because last year it wasn't included. And 16, 18,000 dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah.
Now, that's gonna make people a little...
Was that set at 18 last year, Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm all in favor of doing a separate article.
Yeah, I think...
Because I think we should keep that as a discussion. If, especially if we get in a spike. Or especially if we get a big, uh, big cut, which probably won't happen. So it's worth 10,000, which ain't gonna happen, then we can explain to the town, we've, it's a big number.
We, it's a discussion we can have when we get to that.
Okay. Okay, so what was the, how come it...
Well, for now, it's a question. We don't, we're not sure what to put in until we can do a little research. Um, law enforcement, we dropped way down, of course, because we...
We budgeted 10 hours at 51 dollars?
Yeah, I think we should do the same thing in the event that we need to hire...
510 again?
Yeah, 510 again, if we have to hire the state police. We've got, there's some numbers we still have to hammer out.
We have the highway.
We have the highway budget, which we have to go through. We have appropriations once we've figured all the rest of those out. Timing wise, we really need to get this all hammered out before the end of the year.
It would be nice, yeah.
It would be very good if we didn't let this drift into January. Because in January, we really have to have, we need to warn the exact articles, so we need to have totals. The auditors need to do things on mostly the end of year financials, but also to see the budget at least. And it's good if they can all be done at the same time. So we already have a number of things on our agenda for December 18th. I personally don't think it's realistic we can finish this without scheduling a special meeting between now and then. Only, only finish the budget. Well, I mean, unfortunately, Mark's not here, but I mean, what we did last year for the...
We level funded.
We level funded the highway budget last year.
Right.
Um, in fairness to Joseph and Shelby, I think it would be good for us to go through the line items and have a discussion about it rather than just assuming that we're gonna level fund everything. But we need Mark to be here for that.
You probably don't want to level fund it here, right?
Sorry?
You probably don't want to level fund it consecutive years, right?
Well, it depends on the cost.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, we, we may or may not, but I mean, I think we should, I think we should be going through the... We should be going through the lines.
Yeah, mine might one.
Because there may be things that we can, that need to be increased or decreased. So I think we need to, we need to talk through all of that. The appropriations, I think we're gonna need to go through in a decent amount of detail. And there's gonna probably need to be a lot of discussion about that.
Would you, would you agree that it's probably the last thing to do? Because we can tweak that, we can tweak that in, in reference to where we're at with the rest of the budget?
I think it's informative to know where we are with the rest of the budget before we...
Wait, just a second.
Yes, absolutely, I agree. But that, of course, means we need to get all of this done, before we get to that.
Before, that's, this is the, that's actually the easy part, because we're just...
In a way, it's, there's not that many items, and it's, yeah.
We're agreeing on numbers.
So all of that being said, how do people feel about having a separate budget meeting next week?
The 11th?
Do you need me here?
Wait a second, let me see what we've got up there.
Not necessarily.
Not for the...
Because I have meetings Monday and Thursday.
Monday and Thursday, yeah. Uh, I have meetings Monday and Thursday also.
The 11th is okay.
Is the 11th okay? Is the planning commission not...
Uh, no.
Or no, they meet on Thursday instead.
They're meeting on, uh...
So then do what? Not then and then 18th.
Oh, wait a second, hold on.
And then we get 3 days.
No, you're right, I think the planning commission, the planning commission will be that day.
The planning...
On the 11th?
Yes.
Okay. Um, how do people feel about the 10th? I know you're out.
Yeah.
But that's fine.
Or they come back. My only problem is we don't want Shelby, Shelby here, I'd really like to make sure that she's included, for the reason that she escaped.
But I mean, we only have, we only have a certain number of days to pick.
Well, I know that.
And it's like, you know, so...
Right, I mean, I'll, I mean, I'll, I'll email her tonight about it, hopefully she can, I mean, if not, then I guess we could have, try to figure something else out, but...
We'll go one or two dates?
It's a little...
Number one date, number two date, just for, just for giggles?
Well, I mean, honestly...
We have to warn it, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, like I said, personally...
How many days on five?
I'm in five, yes.
I can't meet Monday, Thursday, or Friday of next week. So, I mean, for me, it's either Tuesday or Wednesday.
Okay.
Um, Wednesday, there's a planning commission meeting, so that's...
We have to get the church, it's too cold.
Right, we'd have, we'd have to figure something else out.
Will you be the last three years today?
But it'll go really quick.
I mean, I think all we can do is plan based on those of us who are here.
Yeah.
Um, and then, like you say, I'll reach out to Shelby and hopefully she can...
You just say it's very important and...
Yeah.
We should make it.
Um, Guy is Tuesday.
That's good, yeah.
Does that work for you?
Yep, Tuesday, the...
Tuesday, the 10th.
10th, right, okay. Let me put that in there.
So...
7 o'clock, it's 6:30?
And we're doing 8th and 22nd. You gotta remember all the stuff.
Yeah, 6:30.
And 8th and 22nd in January, okay.[1586.91]
Right.
Okay, numbers, names, forget, let me actually get it, senior moment doesn't check it quite as quick.
I'm just saying, I can remember numbers, but names, faces, forget it.
I think Guy Dade, that I worked with four years ago, I've seen him endless times, couldn't remember his name.
Okay, I guess maybe I should just, I mean, I'm gonna make a motion, just...
That agenda's gonna be strictly budgeted?
It's gonna be only budgeted, yeah. Okay, so I make a motion that we schedule a special meeting where the only agenda item will be budget planning for... Tuesday, December tenth at six-thirty PM, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joseph, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of scheduling a special meeting for budget planning for Tuesday, December tenth at six-thirty, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, okay?
But... No more bills?
Oh, yeah, I'll call Mark. Call Mark.
There's no sense in doing it if Mark's like, is...
Yeah.
I assure you, you're concerned about getting it done quickly, so we don't, so we can sum it up well before the end of December, cause our last meeting is, is the week before Christmas.
It's still on Christmas.
What?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's...
What are you bringing me, what are you giving me there?
I think chalk.
Well, so here's what, here's, here's something I'll say, actually, that, I mean, uh, Mark and I need to get together between now and the thirteenth at the very least anyway, because we were gonna put in a grant application for Better Backroads grant. So, worst case scenario, if, if Mark can't make that night, I will meet with Mark and go through the highway budget and get his thoughts on stuff.
And plug in figures.
And plug in things, if, if for some reason he can't make it, I'll, I'll find a way to get his feedback on it.
Would be, would be nice to enter agenda or with this line just for you.
Yes, it would.
For everybody.
Yeah, yeah, cause it's, it's gonna cause us a lot of other problems if we don't, um, okay, cool. All right, uh, Guy, do you wanna give us a, um, super brief update on anything on the clerk of laws?
Uh, basically, we're doing our end of year reports now, vitals and dog licenses and so forth, we're getting ready for the end of the year. Uh, our delinquent taxes are, we reduced them down to twenty-two dollars, and I think that'll go away also, so we're good with delinquent taxes. And, um, everything is, is what it is, I was, I was a little concerned that there was a, a closing scheduled for today for the conservatory properties over in Brooklyn, and the information meeting was today. So I just wondered how that, I don't know how that played out, but that, when I saw that, it made me concerned, I spoke to the attorney on Tuesday and said, she said that the closing was scheduled for yesterday or today. So I don't know, I just, you know, I thought that was...
For the...
Conservatory, yes, yeah, yeah. So at any rate, uh, that's, that was one of my, just wondered about it. And other than that, things are going good, Quinstone, the thing with the books, uh, we got a new book, a new volume, and again, I, I just wanna point out, those little red books in the vault cost three hundred and seventy-one dollars apiece. Just a bare book with pages. That's how prices have escalated. No, and it's, it's, when we're doing budget, we have to realize that we can't stay in today's world, because anyone will allow us to stay in today's world. Uh, it's, it, everything is escalating, and it's, uh, it's a factor.
I paid a hundred and seventy-five dollars today for it.
But anyway, so that's where we are. We're in good shape, I think the town is in total compliance with all the rules and regulations that we have to be, and, um, next year's gonna be a big election year, as you all know, so we're starting to prepare now. There's a new listserv going out for elections, um, so it's gonna get busy real fast. And as we all know, town meeting is right around the corner, and I don't know, have you established a time?
No.
For the town meeting?
It's gonna be on the agenda for the eighteenth.
Okay.
It is?
Yeah.
Yeah, more work, okay, I really...
Anyway, it'll be on the agenda for the eighteenth.
Okay, that's all I have for the town, uh...
Wish I had time to read that book, that Deb was talking about, that one town that started their, their town meeting at four-thirty in the afternoon, had a lot of, a lot of success with it. Success is what I meant to, I don't wanna set some, well, it's, it's different now, but I don't know.
But, no, yeah, I mean, it's...
I don't know, my, you know what my ambition is, to get to most people that are possibly at them.
Right.
So that's all I'm interested in, but...
So we can have that discussion when we, on the agenda, one of the things I have on, to be on the agenda for the eighteenth is the time, time, to set the time for town meeting, so...
When, and, when does town...
Well, it's a show.
Done, that, when does the town meeting report go to press?
Paid, she paid the taxes twice.
Beginning of February.
So if we have a little more time to sign?
And I'll explain to her.
Yeah, we don't, because we have to set and warn the town meeting in advance of the books being produced. There's, there's a statute which Guy can, that it has to be done, it has to be done earlier in January than... The report has to be distributed ten days before town meeting, or something like that, but we have to do...
I have it on my desk.
Between thirty and forty days before town meeting, we have to actually warn the town.
She thinks we have money paid, and we took the money, and we take, we have to adjust the taxes.
Okay, so anyway, let's do correspondence, we're...
I know.
Emails, just the one thing I'll say, we did get the email from Carrie Born about the issues on Whitney Hill Road, which Mark and, uh, with Archie's help, were dealing with the other day. And I think they've improved that situation, and, well, now stuff's probably frozen, but improved the situation at the time, as well as stuff out on the after road that day. That was the only email particularly of note. Mail, mail, we have a couple more notices from the Vermont Department of Health about the town health officer and the deputy health officer's terms expiring at the end of December. That's also something... That's something that's gonna have to be on the agenda for the eighteenth as well. Um, then we have the note from Nemrick about the rate increase, which is a very nice note, and they're very apologetic about having to do that. We have these guys set, uh, then we have the VLCT.
I have the deposit number.
Just gets a lawsuit or a lawsuit.
No, sorry, I'm sorry, twelve nine four, excuse me.
Okay.
It does make a lot of noise.
I know, it's a...
Yeah, yeah, they, they have a classer of everybody now.
Well, that's the deposit number.
This is the... That is a massive...
These are the deposit numbers, all of these, and the point zero, and it's... So over here, it's new.
Yeah.
You should get a little bit, that's thirty, forty thousand dollars, man, it's kinda a corner. It wasn't funny.
Okay, um, well, guess we're, uh, we're... Well, the payroll, you don't have to sign, I've already signed up the other day. Yeah, and... Okay, well, those are going on, so...
There was something I wanted to add, yeah.
So for the eighteenth, let me just run through what I've got already. So for the eighteenth, we're gonna look at a new description for building commissioner.
Yes, that's what it was.
As I do it.
Thank you, thank you.
I think we should talk a little bit about the road commissioner.
Position, okay.
What we might wanna do. Uh, we'll discuss an ideally set town meeting time. We will, I will have a draft of a letter in support of the Deer Run Nature Preserve, assuming I don't get feedback from people after the thing tonight, saying they don't like it. That we'll just need to approve, so I can send that off before the end of the year for them.
Do you have the, uh...
As well as the planning, the planning commission has already drafted one that they want, that I will send as well, once we're all good with it. Sorry, what were you...
Do you have the census guy on there?
Oh, no, I don't.
Yeah, yes, gonna be there.
I can't spell census. See, yeah, that's your good, census person.
Uh, okay, so we'll put him at the top, and we'll give him ten, fifteen minutes of host.
Yeah, I would, I can, I can speak with him, but I would assume fifteen at least, I guess, kind of, kind of a big deal.
For what? For what?
The census.
Well, you don't wanna do that on me, you think, when, we have to do it by the end of the year?
Well, he's, he's been pushing, he's been, he's been reaching out to us a lot, so we, we decided a while ago to invite him. Let's give him, we'll give him fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
I mean, if it drifts, that's okay.
Help out the term expiry date.
It expires December thirty-first.
This year. Oh, expired.
Expires.
Expires, on December thirty-first, so, yeah. Um, okay, so yeah, so I have census person whose name I looked up at some point before that, before I take this up. Uh, town health officer, I don't, we'll just have a quick discussion about it. Anything else anybody can think of?
Oh, uh, also, the, um...
Maybe we may have to have some budget discussion, I guess.
The road...
All in by one.
Oh, road bids, uh, and that day, so...
Go, Joseph.
Right, for a, yeah, right, okay, so we'll do, we can, although we're not really expecting to have...
Yeah, we're not gonna make this...
We're not gonna, right.
But at least we'll have to set an agenda or meetings, yeah.
What you have, what...
Gonna open bid?
No, we'll just, they've, they've been trickling in, and we'll just sort of have a discussion of what has been proposed.
They're not really, uh, sealed bids.
Exactly, good firm bids.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay, uh, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll warrant two-zero-two-zero dash two-two. Uh, dated November twenty-second, twenty nineteen, in the amount of one thousand four hundred and ten dollars and eighty cents, is there a second? Second by Bruce, any discussion?
November tenth?
Uh, November twenty-second.
Ah, thank you.
Uh, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant two-zero-two-zero dash twenty-two, dated November twenty-second, twenty nineteen, in the amount of one thousand four hundred and ten dollars and eighty cents, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Then I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable warrant two-zero-two-zero dash two-one, dated December fourth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of five thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bruce, any discussion? All those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant two-zero-two-zero dash two-one, dated December fourth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of five thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? All right, those are approved. We set our agenda, I think we're good, uh, anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, so...
Moved by Bruce, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joseph, all those in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at please forty-three.